Waterloo City Council Planning Session and Work Session, Roll Call, please.
Mr. Bowson.
Here.
Mr. Amos is here. Mr. Morrissey, Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
And Mr. Mayor.
And, God, the timing was perfect. We just did the roll call.
Please join me in a moment of silence. All right, please join me in the pledge, which will be led by Ward Three Council Member, Scott Morrissey.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented, the minutes of the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one work session as proposed, and the minutes of the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular session as proposed.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda and minutes.
Can you make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition to one A one in the amount of bills payment in the amount of five million, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-three cents? Move to receive, approve, and place on file.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second, council. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bowson.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number number two, three, and four?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving certification of Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one downtown Waterloo Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Tax Increment District and place a certification on file. Next is a resolution approving certification to the Blackhawk County Auditor for fiscal year twenty twenty-one expenditures that qualify for reimbursement of the East Waterloo Unified Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Tax Increment District and place a certification on file. And number four is a resolution approving certification to the Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Northeast Industrial Park Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Tax Increment District and place a certification on file.
Second. The motion has been made with the second, council. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
And Mr. Bowson.
Yes.
All right, thank you, five, six, and seven, please.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving certification to the Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in the FY twenty twenty-one Crossroads Waterloo Tax Increment District and place the certification on file. Number six is adopting a resolution approving certification to the Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in the FY twenty twenty-one University Avenue Tax Increment District and place a certification on file. And number seven is adopting a resolution approving certification to the Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in the FY twenty twenty-one Martin Road Increment Tax Increment District and place a certification on file.
Second. The motion has been made with the second, council. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
Mr. Bowson.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes. All right, eight, nine, and ten, Mrs. Klein.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Number eight is a resolution approving certification of the Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Rath Area Tax Increment District and place the certification on file. Number nine is a resolution approving certification of the Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one San Marnon Tax Increment District and place the certification on file. And number ten is a resolution approving electronic submission of the tax increment finance, TIF, reports to the state of Iowa for fiscal year twenty twenty-one submitted by Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second, council. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen. Mr. Bowson.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Number eleven, coming up for update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, this year has been kind of a trying year for our department with the pandemic and the number of calls that have came in through our office. Our mission statement, though, is that we are determined to reduce the blight and enhance the appearance of neighborhoods, and we will do this with fair and equitable enforcement of our code and ordinances. And our highest goal is our commitment to the citizens of Waterloo. Our department goals that we have set for ourselves this year are to continue to keep a positive attitude and to perform our duties in a fair, professional, and courteous manner. We are looking forward to developing and adopting and doing some changes to a few of our ordinances and codes that will have positive effects on our community. We assist the public to the best of our ability, and we will continue to work with other departments to serve the public. I did a breakdown between last year of twenty twenty and what we have done so far in twenty twenty-one. I do have some updated numbers from the numbers that are shown on your screen right now. So, our calls for service and re-inspects are now at eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-one. Our citations that we have issued year-to-date are six hundred and fifty-five. Our traffic tickets are two hundred and thirteen. We've referred out one hundred and nineteen court orders. We have referred out eighty-eight administrative orders. We have referred out sixty-three of our legal dumping orders. And for the recyclables bins such as Ainsborough and Crossroads Center, we have issued fifty-two citations. Some of the things that, and I know that there are quite a few citizens that really honestly believe that code enforcement drives by things or that we do not do things fairly, but it is all that we can do with the staffing that we have to just keep up with the amount of calls that are coming in. When we do have time, we do try to be proactive. But right now, it's, we still are, and we're looking forward to snow this year, hopefully, not, but we still have an abundance of calls coming into the office. Some of the things that we have done to assist some of our citizens, we do assist out-of-town property owners to find applicable lawn care or snow removal or tree removal services. We have actually, on our own time, taken firewood to a citizen who cannot afford his heat bills. We have actually went and helped a few elderly people shovel out their driveways just so that they could get out. They did not have the means to pay for any type of snow removal, nor did they have any family here in order to help them. We have removed alley growth on our own time for a few elderly citizens. We try to be a really good support system for citizens. Sometimes it's not just all about going up to a door and giving somebody a notice. It's really listening and trying to get to know the citizens in our specific areas and the challenges that they have been facing through this whole pandemic. We try to be a good support system for them. We have gone beyond our scope this year of code enforcement to find solutions and problems in neighborhoods. With the help of the Engineering Department and IT, we have successfully launched our GIS system, and this allows us to do our calls out in our vehicles, on our tablets, which, in retrospect, kind of eliminates some of our in-office time. It provides us quite a bit of information while we're out there so that we are not having to go back to the office to look up certain things. We really like this system, and it works very effectively for us. With the dilapidated housing, and we do get quite a few calls on a lot of the dilapidated housing throughout Waterloo, we are having to develop new ways to secure these vacant structures. People are coming up with all sorts of ways to get into these buildings that we keep boarding. We have had to purchase new tools and materials in order to secure the structures that have metal door frames or rotten frames. We have had to use metal plates, metal strips. We've actually had to reframe some doors and windows just to try to get them secure. I know that we get a lot of calls on the church, St. Mary's, and the parish building that sits next to that, but you're looking at every time that we end up trying to go and we end up trying to board something, there's thirty-six more windows that are being knocked out. And we are having a difficult time with that. We are trying to keep our costs at a minimum, and we are responsible for securing all private and city-owned properties, but some of these properties are getting to the point where it is impossible for us to keep them secure. They are now taking sledgehammers and all sorts of things to all of our materials that we have, that we are boarding up. They are using crowbars, and even though we try and talk to the neighbors and neighboring tenants to please call PD if they know that somebody is trying to get back in, they know somebody is trying to beat in our boards, it's still just an endless battle. And that is where we are at as far as our department for this year. So, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I have a couple, Maria. One is, and I'm trying to remember the details, but maybe a year ago, Randy Bennett, and he was here earlier, but I don't, anyway, he made a change in his department and reassigned some staff, and one of the hopes was that with that realignment, some of their time might be able to help you. Has that worked out yet, or?
As far as like boarding facility?
Well, just staffing, period, to help all of code enforcement.
Um, they, they do a really
Yeah.
They do a really good job as far as trying to keep up with our court orders and our illegal dumps. Scott Brunson and I work really well together, and so we, together, kind of keep track of where we're at and what we actually need to do.
Great, great. Are you getting any camera support that'll be helpful to you?
Any?
Camera?
Camera support?
I remember we had an issue on West Fourth, way at the southern part of town, and I know they were putting in cameras at that time to try to help with people doing some of the dumping.
Down on East Fourth Street?
Yeah.
Yes. There was a camera that was placed there that proven to be a little bit effective, but then again, you have between Lakeside, I believe, and going all the way down to Ralston and around the corner, and so that camera only was able to target like a certain area.
Okay.
But.
But Sharon, that wasn't South Waterloo. That wasn't the south end of.
I'm sorry. I got it turned around north Waterloo, I'm sorry. Yeah, Maria knew what I was talking about.
But Maria, the cameras at the recycling spots, we do have those, right?
Yes.
Do they work?
They are very effective. They are very effective, and actually, at the very beginning, when the cameras actually went up, Scott and I were just back and forth with emails and photos and videos, and it has, I think word by mouth, has kind of gotten around, and they have put up new, you know, newer signs that, you know, are on the dumpsters now, and it has proven to be effective. So, all of our citations and illegal dumps, especially, we were having a huge issue over on the Ainsborough site, has pretty much subsided now.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
And then I, I'm sorry, I have one more question. You and I had talked a while ago about the issues you were having with cars parked illegally, and you'd go give them a citation, they'd move it afoot and come back, and it was just impossible for you to keep up. Have you been able to address that? We had discussed some ideas, and I didn't know if you were able to implement anything that was helpful to you in the habitual situation.
With your habitual offenders, unfortunately, they will continue to be habitual offenders, so we do have some areas in Waterloo that require a little bit more of our attention as far as people not moving their vehicles or blocking people's garbage cans. You know, they'll move them, and then they end up bringing them back.
But we had talked about if they got like three citations a year, we would go after them pretty, pretty hard, because we knew that those were the ones that were trying to play the system.
Well, what we were trying to do is put traffic ordinance and city ordinance and try and get them pretty much in alignment, because what happens is, is when you issue a notice to an individual on a vehicle, they will move it to the street.
Yeah.
And then, as, then they're complied with, and then they turn around and they take that vehicle from the traffic aspect of it, and they put it back upon the property. And so, I know that Mr. Peterson and I have talked about trying to come up with a little bit more in-depth as far as like the motor vehicle issues that we're having, so.
So, you're trying to fix it.
Trying to fix it, yes.
It's a new one now. The new one is to park half your vehicle on your curb, so you'll have two tires on the street, and then you'll have the other two on the right, yeah, right in there. So, that's interesting. Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, Maria, do all of the sites for recycle sites have cameras? I thought they didn't.
I, there, I believe there's a couple of them, and I know that they're working on the rest. We really don't have a lot of issues with like the East Eleventh site. We don't really, the ones out at Crossroads, we pretty much got that under control. And like I said, Ainsborough, Ainsborough does have the cameras, and it is pretty much subsiding there, too.
Okay. Yeah, I had some other things. Some people, I don't, I don't think really understand what code enforcement does other than take a call and then go out on it. I think some, I don't think people really get all the work that code enforcement does. Can you, I mean, the anatomy of a call just starts with that call being made.
Correct.
And there's a lot more to the body of it other than that.
Correct. So, basically, the biggest complaint that we get when people say that code enforcement isn't doing anything is because there's a process that we have to follow. So, when we get a call, we go out and we give notice. Generally, our notices are ten-day notices. We usually go back on the eleventh or twelfth day because the magistrates want to give the citizens like their full ten days. On your larger projects, we may start them out at thirty days. So, by the time that ten days has elapsed, and it could take us two to three days just to respond to a call, depending on the call, so we have a spreadsheet that we log all of our calls on, and we go in the order in which those calls come in, unless it is something that is a traffic issue or something that needs our immediate attention. So, then, at the end of that time, we will issue a citation, and so the citation is just, if, unless we grant an extension, which we're, we're pretty gracious about granting any extensions when the public calls and talks with us. But in the event that they do not comply with that, we will issue a citation. So, then our arrangements are about three to four weeks out. So, then you're talking that once we issue the citation, we cannot go and remove those items until the court process is totally completed. Our trials right now are being scheduled in February. So, something I may write a citation for today, and somebody pleads not guilty, and then they end up going to trial, those items will sit there until we go to court. Then, depending on whether or not they're found guilty or not, if they're found guilty, the courts then still grant them anywhere from ten to thirty days, depending. So, you're looking at a very long, in-depth process, which you're right. The public doesn't, doesn't really understand the full concept of just one call. And so, if we grant an extension, our extensions usually will grant them an extra ten days or a week, depending on what it is. So, it just, you know, it's, it's a very lengthy process to get things completed. Once we get the court order and they don't comply with that court order, then we put that out to sanitation, and sanitation schedules when they're able to go and clean up the property. So.
Traffic tickets, what kind of traffic tickets can code enforcement issue?
Blocking the sidewalk, parking on the right-of-way, parking a couple of your wheels up on the curb and not where they're supposed to be. If you're not moving your vehicle every forty-eight hours off the block, it can't be just a couple of feet up and five feet back. You actually have to move your vehicle off the block. We'd also issue for tickets for vehicles that have expired plates or maybe an operable or sitting up on jacks, which I'm sure at some point, everybody has like seen that with a flat tire. So, we do issue traffic tickets for that.
Okay, and when a complaint comes in, does the clerical or whoever takes the call evaluate whether that meets the muster to go out? And then, once you go out, you have specific criteria that have to go by in order to issue that ten-day ticket, don't you?
The, when the calls come in, those calls are logged in. It is our job to go out and not make a determination sitting behind a desk. We go out to every single call that is called into our office. If it is an unfounded complaint, then we mark it as unfounded. If there is an issue, then we address it. If there are other issues other than the call that was called in on that same property, then we address those issues at that time.
And then, I mean, I could keep going with other questions, but I know that I've harped on, and I think other people, other council members have harped on the fact that you need more staff. Has anything changed there?
Um, no.
Okay, thanks.
There, Mr. Bowson. Thank you, sir. So, on the, on the securing of the buildings, are we still assessing the property owners when it's not one of our properties?
Yes.
For the, for the, for the, your time and materials?
So, I had a couple of them today, so we followed the same standard procedure. We give them a ten-day notice. Depending on the significance of that property, at the end of that ten-day notice, we may issue a citation and go ahead and board it and bill them, or we may issue a citation and then wait for the court process.
And then generally, that, that'll end up on the tax rolls when they don't pay, correct? Assessment on the taxes.
Assessment on the taxes for the material that we have to use, yes.
Do you also, also bill for labor? Or just the materials?
We bill for the material.
Is there a reason we don't bill for labor when we're sending you guys out there and to that property owner to secure it? Because I think that, that's something I, I don't know with our city attorney if that's legal to do, but I would think that it's, it's part of the boarding process.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. We do bill for the time that we spend. I have two, two of my part-time officer and then my full-time officer, they are the ones that go out together.
All right, and personally, I want to thank you for how responsive your department has been on, on certain areas of town. We'll just leave it at that. I wanted to talk a little bit about snow removal and not, when people are in violation of not moving their vehicles after snowstorms. And I know code enforcement has come out and marked these vehicles, but we never, it's like we don't tow them. We mark them for forty-eight, and we don't get back to towing them. And what I was told is that, well, we're trying to coordinate with Randy so that we can move these vehicles when they're able to come out with and clean the road. But I truly think on some of these chronic violators with, that constantly leave their vehicles out in the street and two or three snowfalls that they've been plowed around, if we marked them and we, and we tagged them, and whatever the timeframe was, if we came out there and just hooked them and moved them and towed them, I think that these chronic people would think twice when they, when they got to pay a towing fee and a storage fee to get their vehicles back in the future.
And we are doing that downtown, so why not?
But we're not doing it in the residential areas.
No, I'm saying, why not?
You know, and so that, that's just my opinion. I, I don't think we should have to wait for Randy to have people available to, to clean those streets. I think that we should hook them, tow them, and then, and then that chronic violator that constantly leaves their vehicles for two or three snowfalls, I think they'd think twice the next time it snowed.
It's work downtown. People are being more responsive.
Mr. Bowson, would you, would you be amenable to making sure that you and Mr. Amos and Mr. Greider and Mr. Foyce and the new council write up ordinance language, making that happen?
I think we have it in our ordinance. It's just that, it doesn't, it's just that we're not, we're not being able to coordinate the two together.
Well, it sounds like there's some tweaking that needs to occur. Is that correct, City Attorney Peterson?
I'll, I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
And the last thing I wanted to mention, and it had to do with the drop sites or the recycle sites, and because I drove by it on my way here to the council meeting, and the Crossroads site, and I know, I know we're working on, on the complexities of getting cameras out there and getting them up and running, but because of the open area out there, that when I drove by there today, the field on the, I would call it the northeast side of that drop site is completely covered with litter and sacks and garbage and everything that's been blowing out of that recycle site. And it, it's, it's a mess. And I'm just wondering, as, as a city, if we put a snow fence up?
We did do that down on the Ainsborough site when it was down where the pond area was at one time, because it was like blowing down by the water and blowing through. And they did put up a semi-snow fence just to keep that material from, from going.
And I would, I was just bringing that up today because it caught my eye driving by it. I couldn't believe what a mess it was. And I think if the city would, would come out and put a, put a fencing up there, at least when that site blew, it's, it's going to get caught. And I mean, and who is, who is responsible now to clean that field?
Sanitation has been out there several times cleaning that field, especially earlier this spring.
It's, it's completely covered today. So, I would hope that it, that it doesn't fall on deaf ears and we can get somebody out there and, and put some fencing up to, to. It's not going to eliminate the blowing, but if we can, if we can cut, if we can cut our man-hours down and going out there to clean it up just by putting up. and going out there to clean it up just by putting up some temporary fencing, it would be, it would behoove us to do that. And, and thank you for everything you and your department does.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Amos.
Um, Maria, I'm sure you were privy to the conversation that I had prior to the meeting starting. And um, with, I'm gonna be in contact with the mayor first to get his permission to talk with you from a standpoint of what's going on, and I'll talk with him after the meeting here. But um, I really need to talk with you, find out exactly what's going on from a standpoint. Have you heard some of the conversation, I'm sure? And it's just for me, I wanna address it because for six years I've been on the council and this, I've never received a call from the individual and it's just, you know, I, I, it's, for me, he needs to get ahold of me so that I can find out what's going on. I'm sure that, you know, you're doing your job like you should be doing it. And it's just a matter of, I'm having issues with this gentleman from a standpoint of the comments that he's making, so I'm gonna follow up on it just to let you know.
I appreciate that. Those um, those properties were actually called into the office. I did overhear part of that conversation. Um, that particular individual has never called our office to complain about anything or to turn in another property. So had he had done so, we would have went out just like we do for any other caller complaint that comes in.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rand, one final thing.
Is there anyone else before we, Mr. Morrison?
Well, uh, one of the things I think, another thing that people don't know is that code enforcement doesn't work weekends. You're Monday through Friday. I think you're off three-thirty, that's when the office closes the code enforcement from Monday through Friday. But there is a uh way to get code enforcement issues taken care of over the weekend. Can you explain what that is?
Sure. Anybody can call our office and leave a message. We check our messages, you know, first and foremost, like on Monday morning. Um, most people have my email address. They're more than welcome to email me at any given time. And there is the online application on the city website that they can actually fill out a complaint that uh gets forwarded to me.
And with traffic concerns like parking on the sidewalk and stuff like that, if that's happening on the weekend, which uh, you know, I've had numerous calls over the period of time on council that people wait till the weekend and then they do this. Uh, and then Monday rolls around and they don't do it anymore. So when that's occurring on the weekend, uh, can't they call the police department to have that taken care of?
Yes, they can call dispatch. Dispatch also does traffic. Uh, we, we just assist at the same time. So they're, they're, they do more traffic than we do. There's, we are limited to what we actually do, but they're always more than welcome to call dispatch.
All right, thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your efforts. Uh, your, your department receives a lot of heat, um, but I will thank you for your efforts. So for sure, thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Right, um, Noel Anderson.
Does Marty have anything from the legal department or not?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Peters.
Let me brief, Martin Peterson, legal department. I just wanted to let the council know that um, in twenty-twenty, there were thirteen-hundred-and-sixty-two cases filed in um, at the courthouse. Waterloo Police Department filed seven-hundred-and-forty-seven cases and other city civil infractions constituted another six-hundred-and-fifteen cases. So that total for twenty-twenty was one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-two. Uh, up to September second of this year, the total filings were one-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-four. So we will exceed twenty-twenty filings fairly easily. The legal department has also started handling automated traffic enforcement and chronic nuisance citations for the Waterloo Police Department for the cameras. So when somebody gets a camera citation, they can elect to request a municipal infraction be filed. And then that's filed at the courthouse and it becomes our case if they want to contest it after the administrative process of appeals within the police department. So we've seen a fair number of increases in that. We had um, just this year, a hundred-and-fifty-one citations that issued in um default judgments or guilty pleas. And we've had uh a number of trials, I think probably twenty-five or thirty trials um that went to the court. Um, in twenty-twenty, the legal department filed six, six-fifty-seven A cases. We filed three this year and are preparing three additional cases. Um, we are also handling the new recycling violations as Maria alluded to. And so that's been um on the increase too. Those go straight to court and then folks complete guilty or not guilty and we try that case as well. Um, so that was the update I briefly wanted to give you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you both. Um, let's go to Reece Priestington.
Noel Anderson, community planning development director. So we have new census data in, which means we have to go through the process of redistricting. Um, as you may be aware, the census was very late this year in turning in the information, which made it late to the state of Iowa in terms of them turning in the information. Normally, the redistricting process would have been done before the election. Uh, because the data came through so late, we had to wait for the state to move their boundary lines for state senate and state house um districts. Now that that is done, it's in our hands to change it. I'll have Eric go through the details of what we have to look at with each ward, with each precinct, with the state lines.
Eric Trader, city planner. So warden precinct redistricting. Um, I've been with the city long enough that uh, this is my third go-around. The two thousand, after the two thousand census, we had to do quite a bit of changes to warden precincts. Uh, two thousand and ten, um, we didn't have to change anything, which is, I guess, a good thing from a work standpoint, but a bad thing from the population change. Um, and now the two thousand and twenty is here. Uh, initially, we didn't think we were gonna have to change too much, but we got word just today that we're gonna have to take a little bit more look at that. But I'll kind of go over that. The precinct rules are, are pretty strict on limiting where you can draw the precinct boundaries. There's lots of rules on um not being able to cross legislative districts, uh, state level, federal level, uh, not being able to cross census blocks or census track lines. Um, having them be as concise as possible and having them have a maximum population of three-thousand-five-hundred uh per. And then uh, the ward boundaries then have to follow precinct boundaries. So you can't have a ward that splits a precinct in half. And the ward um populations are supposed to be as uh equal as possible with a, up to a ten percent deviation. So we had a plan that was included in what was submitted to you that we thought met that requirement. Our understanding of the law was you have your uh ideal ward population by taking the population of the city divided by the five wards, that would be your ideal. And then a ten percent, maximum ten percent deviation um up or down. But we were told from the county today that it's actually a maximum ten percent deviation from your lowest to your highest. So we'll have to uh relook at some of those boundaries a little bit. And we actually have done that and we have some ideas on how it could work. Um, but those are kind of the basics for what limits those populations. And then I guess um, I will open it up to any questions or I do have access to the map that we can um look around a little bit as well.
Yeah, just, and maybe you answered this one I just left. Is there a deadline for when we have to have this done?
Um, sixty days from the date that the governor signed the state legislative uh redistricting, which that sixty days ends on either January third or January fourth.
Okay, so you've got a little bit of time there.
A very little bit of time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you'll get us new maps when, cause they're so pretty, Eric.
Very pretty.
Yes, it looks great.
So, uh, so Eric, the, the December twentieth date's out the window now. We're looking at the first meeting in January.
No, we would still be looking to try and have this on the um first Monday in December for consent resolution uh to set the data hearing as December twentieth. And we will um scramble to get you the new maps. But um, right now, from the maps that you currently have, uh, what is being looked at is to take um a little bit of Ward one, Precinct one, um, uh, split that and two to put a little into Ward three. Uh, and to take a little bit of Ward two, Precinct four and. I can do it all. Preloaded one now. Where the cursor is, is the current Ward one, Precinct one. We're potentially looking at splitting that along Green Hill. Um, and then the other change would be um Ward two, Precinct four and possibly a little bit of Ward two, Precinct three to go to Ward four. That would be in the area the cursor is showing right there. And with that, that would uh change the populations just enough to match that um ten percent deviation requirement. But we're looking for any input uh from the council, any concerns? But yes, we're on a very tight timeline, so we'll be crunching to try and finalize uh yet this week. And then set it for that December twentieth hearing.
So, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. So Eric, my understanding is, is the changes that are made for four and three are going to stay the same as far as that, what's on the map right now?
Oh, like the changes that were already shown on, on the proposal?
Yeah.
Y- that was um staff's initial thought. Um, Ward four was the lowest population, so we had to add more population to that. Um, we thought we had enough based on how we interpreted the code. We don't, so now we've gotta get uh even more. Um, and we, Ward one and two have to be lowered a little bit to, to make that uh requirement. So our thought was to leave that and then just take a little bit from one and a little bit from two uh to give to three and four to make it all compliant. We can certainly look at other alternatives as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
Uh, so what are we looking at for ideal population? Um, just so we know what the deviation is um for each ward and precinct if possible, if possible. I can calculate it really quick. I had it, I don't have it in front of me, but it is sixty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-fourteen is our twenty-twenty citywide census population. Divided by five is thirteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-two-point-eight persons per ward is the ideal.
Okay. And on the existing map, they have, it's very nifty. Each population for precinct and population for the ward. Um, obviously, you guys are doing lots of work, but could we get one of those for the next one? Just so we can have an idea of who gets how many folks. Yep, absolutely.
And Mrs. Klein and then Mr. Morrison.
Just out of curiosity, what part of Ward one is lost to Ward one?
Yeah, it would, the proposal would be uh Ward one, Precinct one. Uh, the portion that is west of Green Hill would remain in Ward one. And the portion that is east of Green Hill would then go into Ward three, which directly east of that is already part of Ward three. It's Ward three, Precinct five.
So it's the area off Maynard, kind of between Maynard and Rainbow?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Morrison.
Well, I, I guess, having said that, if you split Ward one, Precinct one uh by Green Hill Road, which I'm looking at right now, then where would Ward one, Precinct one from west of Green Hill, would that be incorporated into Ward one, Precinct two?
No, it would, it, Ward one, Precinct one would just be smaller. Ward one, Precinct one currently has a population of two-thousand-and-eighty-four. And I know that's not on your map, but I do have what, what, as we had drawn it on the way that we submitted to you, I do have what each precinct population was. And Ward one, Precinct one, as was previously proposed, was two-thousand-and-eighty-four. So it would be split and become a smaller Ward one, Precinct one. Then the rest of that area could either be added to Ward three, Precinct one or to Ward three, Precinct five, either way.
Okay, and Precinct five. Okay, so um, earlier today, when I met with you and Noel about this and had some questions and stuff like that, some of the uh, some of the complicating factors involved, uh, precincts and uh legislative districts, uh, both House and Senate can't cross those. Precincts can't, they have to stay within that. And um, but you'd also said that, uh, and, cause we had a discussion about, I, I can't believe that our population in Waterloo declined, given all the development that we've had, all the downtown development, all the additional apartments and uh living spaces for people to live. Um, and then I, I think Noel, correct me if I'm wrong, you said something about that there was, that there had, there'd have been an addition of six-hundred or something like that, Noel. Did, is that six-hundred included in the sixty-seven-three-fourteen or not? Or is that not even being included?
This is Trader with staff. It is not included and it will not and cannot be included. Um, I agree that the, 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 um, census numbers and the other community survey um, population numbers they do are very complicated and confusing and we don't always agree with them. But the sixty-seven-three-fourteen is the official twenty-twenty census population for the city of Waterloo and that is the number that we are mandated to use for everything, you know, precinct and ward redistricting.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention that I've got um, uh constituents in, in Ward, Ward three, Precinct two calling because they are being moved uh to a different ward after they, that didn't have an election to uh, um, that ward where there wasn't an election when they voted to elect the person named Aneal Wilder. And they are not very happy with that. Um, and I understand that i- it looks like that would apply to any change when you, with Ward one, Precinct one as well. But um, I, I look at this and I see this little bitty area here, uh, Logan Avenue and that. Um, that can't be that much population. How, do we know how much population is in that configuration that got moved from Ward three to Ward four?
Um, I don't have that number handy, but we could look it up.
Could you please?
It is all based on census blocks, so we could select those census blocks within that area and verify its population. But I agree, it's, it's not gonna be a, a huge number, a couple hundred.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rosen.
Eric, could you show me on the map where Ward, uh, Ward two is gonna, where they're merging to Ward four? And, and the, and your proposed changes? Cause right now the river separates it, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're doing now.
So currently, yes, the line between Ward four and Ward two is the Cedar River. Uh, the proposal would be to move this area in here, which takes just a little bit of Ward two, Precinct three and this part of Ward two, Precinct four, and move it in to Ward four.
That's not a very dense populated area to begin with.
The portion of Ward two, Precinct three might be a um somewhat dense, although even it's not gonna be real huge because it includes some commercial area. somewhat dense, although even it's not going to be real huge because it includes some commercial area.
So, so you're, you're taking the green and the blue that you're, that you're showing us right there?
Right here.
Okay. All right. Now I see it. That is, that is more dense right there.
Yeah, that, that little part is dense, but like Eric said, the part closer to the river is a little bit more spacious.
Okay, thank you.
Council. If you want to, uh, can any questions, comments or concerns to Noel or Eric, please, uh, do so as well. So thank you.
I have just one little quick question, maybe not of Eric, but what would have happened if one of us, one of the people that have been elected no longer lived in the ward?
Run against that person. I don't know which election, but then you have to run against that person. The thing is with the state seats though, you know, that's every two years everyone runs, but.
Would you be grandfathered in until next time or?
You know, if they, it would be interesting to see if you combine a ward where both of them have the different timeframes, but, but what would happen?
This is Schrader with staff. Um, I'm not positive on that either. As I understand it, I, I think after the 2000 election, there was quite a bit of changes in Ward and precincts. And I think that has come in the past where there have been incumbents that have switched what ward they're in and have then had to run for a different ward when they, I, I think they remain until they're up for reelection, but I'm not positive on that. That's, that's outside of my area of knowledge.
That would be interesting. I know, we know on the congressional level and state levels, that's every two years. So you'll be running against each other during that particular time, but here with the staggered, staggered timeframe, it's a little bit different. All right. All right. Thank you. Noel Anderson and Pat Morrison and Dave Boson.
Oh, okay, miss.
Just to let you know, I gotta take off here in about six minutes or so, so I'm not walking out on you, but to take off in a few.
Okay. So Mr. Mayor, I, uh, after the last meeting that we had, and this sort of came up because there were no attachments to that. So we never got a chance to see what this was all about, especially given the fact that it was a development agreement that I disagreed with vehemently. And, um, so when, when it was actually passed to us, I think it was the next day. If I'm not mistaken, that Jamie got, Jamie's not here. Jamie got us those. I saw that and I saw, well, wait a minute, this isn't the same thing that we did before. At least to my knowledge. So I had talked to Councilman Boson about that. He had seen it as well, and we decided that we'd like to have a, uh, discussion about this at the upcoming meeting. And then Kelly Falke created her own rules for how we, I'm just kidding, Kelly. Okay. But anyway, so it, it was basically decided that we would make this, uh, under other council business and that uh, what I did was I put together some questions, uh, and I sent them to, to you, Kelly, to distribute to whoever. And I sent them, I hope all the council got them. And then Mr. Boson also, uh, today I was in receipt of nine questions from, uh, Mr. Boson about development agreements, amendments, future actions. So I don't know where you want to go with this. I mean, I've got 12 questions. Uh, Dave's got nine. So I could go over each one of the questions one at a time, Noel, however you want to handle this.
If Noel is, you have like a five minute presentation that you can do your, he has a, for, for folks that are not aware that in the general public that may be looking, uh, just the very foundation of the conversation of development agreements. I'd be pretty good if we had some type of basis to what that actually means. And then we move into the next level with your 12 and Dave's nine questions or vice versa. But if Noel, if you could go through that pretty expediently for council, that'd be great.
We have a PowerPoint. Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We have a PowerPoint, uh, that goes through. Here's a map of the city of Waterloo with the incentive areas on it. You can see the TIF districts on here. Um, to kind of show where some of our incentive area.
TIF is Tax Increment Finance.
District, yes. Thank you, Mayor. Next slide. City does have an economic development policy plan. That was originally created in oh seven and updated in 2013. The notes the following goals. Um, our key development areas are those TIF districts, so it lists those. The mission is to collaborate with area economic development organizations to create an economic environment which provides significant opportunities for the development of new and existing businesses and targeted redevelopment, resulting in the retention of existing jobs, creation of new jobs, expansion of the tax base and improve quality of life and increased population. The staff goals are to work with developers and companies to help them find sites, buildings and locations in Waterloo for their project. Assist them through the process, working with them on the, working with them on the processes through planning commission, city council, et cetera, including timelines for construction, infrastructure provisions, delays, um, like the pandemic that may occur as long as the project's moving ahead. We're here to help them make things happen. Next slide. Um, again, policy plan talks for the differing needs for areas, including the extension of the infrastructure, rehabilitate or redevelop some areas, land use decisions, use of rise for new roads, traffic improvements, industrial parks. So really we're, we're trying to create that business environment. Um, it talks about again, the partnerships that we have with Rose Cedar Valley, Main Street, Mid-America, MediaCom and other fiber providers, the Waterloo Waterworks, U and I, Hawkeye Community College, the state of Iowa EPA, EDA and the Iowa DOT. Talks about the need for technology, fiber, et cetera, plans for marketing Waterloo and proactive codes in an atmosphere for a business friendly environment. And it talks about working towards goals from capital improvements, tourism, workforce development, et cetera, with partners. Next slide. Incentives the city of Waterloo has, we generally give one acre of land for every 10,000 square feet of new building being built. There is some flexibility in that for site plan layout, orientation of lots, truck turning movements, et cetera. Free land is generally given for land, for projects under 1 million or five years of 50%, if it's not city owned land. Um, free land and five years of 50% is for projects over 1 million in taxable value. As projects get closer to three or four million, additional incentives may be awarded. As projects get closer to eight million plus, eight to 10 million plus, additional incentives may be awarded. Job creation is always a factor in the project incentives, but not included directly in the development agreement. The state of Iowa will have requirements in there for job creation because that's what their incentives are based on. Next slide. Additional incentives, we do have incentives for housing. We have the Cura, which actually offers incentives for industrial, commercial and residential at the three year or the 10 year schedule. The CLURA covers all the areas outside of the Cura for one and two family construction at the three year schedule. We also have the infill policy to promote older neighborhood investment with a $5,000 payment for infill housing once completed. Infill is defined as a lot within a subdivision at least 20 years old and at least 60% of the lots are built upon. For larger lots within older neighborhoods, eligibility is determined by city staff. One example of that would be Baltimore Field. It's a larger lot. The city works to eliminate blight as much as possible through acquisitions, 657A, encourage cleanup through demolition, redevelopment for housing, small business sites. Our policy to sell lots allows for a lessened price for improvements for new constructions, additions, garages, et cetera, to, for lots to create new investment and additional tax based older established neighborhoods. The city has worked to extend infrastructure to new residential areas as well, having sewer extensions completed for further phases of Audubon Park, the new orange school site area. And there's further plans for infrastructure to other areas of the community. The sewer main extensions open up larger acres, acres of land for developers and the, the developers then break them out and extend the sewer into the subdivision area. We also have the Waterloo Housing Investment Program to specifically help developers match the state of Iowa workforce housing program requirements when outside of the Cura or not one and two family home projects. Next slide. We often hear that we give more incentives than other cities do. While each project is worked versus specifics, we generally have the same incentives as nearby communities in Black Hawk County, which is an equivalent of the free, free land or five years of 50%. We also work in different scenarios by partnering with private developers' land as well as city owned land. So while some cities only have free land or their TIF districts over public land, we have TIF districts that also cover private land and we work with private developers. So they invest in those areas. One example is project one's a 10,000 square foot building. The city gives one free acre of land. Our city costs may be at about 200,000 for providing sewer, water, roadway, land acquisition and plating to the site. So the new revenue goes to pay that debt. Example two, project two is a 10,000 square foot building. The company buys one acre site for 165,000 from a private developer. The city gives eight years at 80% tax rebates to basically give them the land for free through those tax rebate rebates. The site was entirely developed by private interest. City has zero debt against the project. And so therefore the new revenue goes to invest in new infrastructure, bring additional businesses, et cetera. Project three, infill, the city 657As two homes near each other. The developer enters into a development agreement, demolishes the houses and builds a new $250,000 valued building. Example four, two empty lots in the same area as project three, but there's homes on them or no homes on them. The city cannot 657A empty lots. Each lot is paying $26 a year in taxes. Developer agrees to buy, we cannot 657A him. So him buying them puts him back on the development. City enters into a development agreement with the developer for six years at 65% rebates to pay back the cost of the land and they build a new $255,000 building on the site. So again, it's about being innovative to try and get projects to move ahead. Excellent. The numbers, since November of 2017, so basically the last four years, we've had 97 new development agreements for businesses. So an average of 24.25 per year, 139 new development agreements. Adding in the housing ones, um, for an average of 34.75 per year, six land acquisitions for Ecom Development, 86 new Cura projects, um, which that's very exciting if you, if you realize that the cure is basically on what we call the distressed portion of the city. 152 new CLURA projects. So that's all new homes in the city of Waterloo. In that period, we have nine development agreements that are in default. Four of those are not moving ahead. Two of them are unsure if they're moving ahead. And three are trying to move ahead with the project, but having some difficulties. Within those numbers, we have had 27 amendments due to various reasons, projects changing somewhat timelines, name changes for the same entity, project ending and returning wanting in action, additional phases added in, et cetera. Within those numbers, we have six assignments to a differing entity due to a sale, partnership or LLC change. What other components do we have in the development agreements? Historic studies, environmental studies, plating of land, acquisition or sale of land, abstract work, deed work, vacate of public right of way if we can to put it back on the tax rolls, variance processes, zoning, site plan approvals, permit code review, demolition, sometimes asbestos actions, actions, infrastructure expansion, improvements to the site. Next slide. The agreements, um, all of our agreements contain language to show what actions the city is taking, land sale, acquisition of land, incentives, tax rebates. They contain language on what the company or the developer has to do in terms of constructing the building, the size, the type, the finish, the timeline to start and complete, and a minimum assessed value on the project. All agreements are set to automatically end if the timeline is not met. There is wording in there that the parties can amend or extend the agreement if the project is still working to move ahead. As a result, we've averaged 147.99 million over the last three years in permit activity. The chart shown up there shows housing and, um, construction activities. Next slide. Just some pictures of some of the projects we've helped with the, the hotel downtown, the former Frito Bakery, the theme park, the marinas moving ahead, Warren Transport. Next slide. The acreages that we're opening up on the west side of the airport, 300 acres of land control, um, and North Crossing Casey's um, is also shown on there. Next slide. Some of the housing, some of the housing pictures are there of houses that are built. The others that are just drawings or houses that are planned that we've approved development agreements for and are nearing construction as we speak. Next slide. Just again, in terms of positive permit activity, um, notable time periods in 2001 to three, the city averaged 63.77 million. They reorganized us to focus more on economic development from 2004 to 2015. Um, we went up to 108.44 million average. In 2015, we added staff for economic development and went up to 113.8 million. And now we've added another staff person specifically just to work on economic development. Um, and we are now, um, averaging about, like I said, the last three years, 147.99 million. There's further breakouts down below what we've averaged. But our last 10 year average is at 110 million. So we're seeing good activity happen. Next slide in the city of Waterloo and, and have received some awards and accolades because of that. So we're continuing to work hard.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Morrison or Mr. Boson either. Mr. Morrison's name was first on the paper, so I'll go in, I'll go in, I'll go in alphabetical, not order.
Okay, okay. Okay. So, uh, thank you Noel for that, that presentation. One of the things that I've been harping on for years is the mode of own policy as being part of some way to get rid of our infill lots. And I don't see, and I still have not seen that policy. And I request, before I get out of here, December 31st, please have that little policy in my hands, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, so I'm going to go through these. Number one, who's permitted to do development agree, agreement? Who is permitted? Who is allowed to do any development agreement? Do I ask these directly of Noel or how do you want me to do this?
We're good.
Okay, okay.
The city can work with any interested party, developer, resident or company for a development agreement. It will achieve beneficial purposes for the city of Waterloo.
Okay. And is there one type, just one type of development agreement? Are there differing types of development agreements?
It's a difficult question. I'd say there are different types of development agreements that are basically all similarly structured. That is, they will all have similar format in terms of what is expected from the company, what's expected from the city, but will contain the details and actions specific to the project at hand.
Okay. And you've already answered with your presentation, number three and number four. And, and okay, so number five, do all development agreements come before the city council for approval?
Yes.
Is that mandatory?
Yes.
Okay. And once the DA has approved by the city council, how can it be changed, amended and by who?
By the city council, development agreement amendment.
So only the city council can change or amend the development?
And it has to be agreed to by both parties.
Agreed to by, okay. Is the city allowed to arbitrarily change a development agreement without developer input or agreement?
No, we'd need both parties to come to the city council for an amendment.
Okay. And developers ever combine development agreements? Is this allowed or has it ever happened? And you sort of had a party there that spoke to that, but.
So I wasn't a hundred percent sure what you're asking here. The city has worked with developers for multiple sites under one development agreement. So it can be accomplished. Or if you're saying can two developers combine to work together through two separate agreements, that doesn't matter to us as long as the objectives of each agreement are met.
Okay, so just pictorially, here's a development agreement that was passed by itself by city council. And then here's another development agreement that was passed by itself by city council. Can the city combine those two without the agreement of both parties?
No, we'd have to, if, if for some reason they need to be combined to achieve the purpose, we'd have to do an amendment to, we probably just need to do a new development agreement.
Okay. So, once the change or changes have been made, does the city council have, you've already said it does. Okay, when the DA has prepared and then plans are finalized, do the surrounding properties to that development agreement have the right to know or be informed of such for their belief of a possible effect of the development agreement to their properties?
So all the development agreements must be approved by the city council at a public meeting. Surrounding properties owners always have the right to come to a city council meeting and state their support, opposition, et cetera, to a proposed agreement. No specific notices are required by state code unless there's some kind of rezoning action or something that requires it.
So nothing's required, that is mandatory, notify neighbors to a development agreement of how this is going to maybe in their opinion, affect their property and property values.
Nothing specific to them, just the normal advertising of the city council meeting.
Okay. Okay. And I, I just remarked that I, I would ask that maybe the future city council uh, and Mr. Mayor, um, put some language in there that, uh, abiding property owners are informed of any development agreements and the effect it might have on their properties. If mistakes are made in the development agreement language or wording, how does that get corrected? Does it require amendments? Uh, who corrects it and are all the parties to the DA required to be notified and approved of any mistakes that are made?
If a mistake is made, it would depend upon the mistake. If it's a simple Scribner error, we may be able to correct it by an affidavit or a document um, to correct the legal description or something like that. If a mistake is made in the overall objectives and actions that are to be performed, um, in the development agreement, then we need development agreement, then we need an amendment and come back, and it'd have to be agreed to by both parties.
Okay. And then my final question here, Noel, is that what are the possible consequences to the city or to the developer should the original agreement not be upheld? And what recourse does the parties, to the DA, have towards the city if there's a belief that the city is not upheld their part and burden?
So each development agreement will have wording on defaults and remedies if all the objectives and actions of the development agreement are not upheld. If the developer does not move ahead with construction, the city may have the ability to take possession of the land back as it was originally city-owned land. If the city fails to convey the land or provide other promised incentives, the developer may have legal actions to take against the city to force performance. Also, rebates are always contingent on the developer getting the project done, and other incentives are sometimes made subject to conditions or a possibility of repayment. Ultimately, if there's a disagreement where one or both parties think they have performed necessary actions and the other does not, then a lawsuit would likely occur to resolve if the parties can't resolve the dispute. Lawsuits are rare, and the city has not had a judgment entered against it.
Okay, two things. Last, would you please send me a copy of your answers to all these questions?
Yes, we can.
Or the council. And then the second thing, I wish that we would have had the attachments two weeks ago.
For the construction activities.
Yeah, for the construction activities and what that showed. Now, the person that was directly affected is not here, and I understand he wouldn't have been able to talk anyway unless he was part of my presentation, which that was not the point, but there are some issues with that, but I guess I don't need to go into specifics, but thank you, Noel, and I hope you appreciate me sending you these, these questions.
Always.
Before, so you could write in red.
And I would note if, you know, if there's a party out there that has a development agreement that thinks that something is not working the way he wanted it to, he should definitely contact me.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Let me interject. Are you gonna send us copies of the PowerPoint or the slides that you just presented?
$5 per email? No, yeah, we can send those out.
You're gonna pay us $5?
I'll probably send them to Kelly to send out.
Okay. If you could do that, as well as the answers to Matt's questions would be very helpful.
Definitely.
If I could just add something, and that is, it would be great to have the incoming council get those too.
Yeah.
If they could get two.
It's good information.
Yeah, I'll just funnel everything through Kelly, because it's Kelly's rules, remember?
I know.
That's right, that's right.
That she makes up.
The book should have been named Kelly's Rules.
Kelly's Rules.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Bozen.
Thank you. So Noel, you answered question one in your, in your presentation, but you've stated in the past that you reach out to developers, you have a spreadsheet to check on the progress of their development. So, and then it, you had just a small number that were not in compliance, but I, I, I don't beg to differ, the numbers are different, but I can name a bunch of them that aren't in compliance right now. But how often do you reach out to them? And then, because it, I mean, sometimes you just get, we're not ready yet, we're moving on. I mean, we haven't, I don't believe we started Warren yet, and which was, was gonna be starting in October.
October 31st was their date to start.
Right, okay, so, and you've been reaching out to them?
Correct.
Okay, so how often do you reach out to these, to the non-compliant development agreements?
I mean, generally, we'll call them when the date is nearing, and then depending upon, you know, their answer, we'll kind of put it in the calendar to reach out to them in the next couple of weeks or a month later. You know, specifically to Warren, I know that they've turned in, they were working out some details on the stormwater design and all that. They have everything in, turned in for permits. It's been approved by building, planning, and engineering and fire, so it's ready to go. Just a matter of them taking out permits now and going ahead with construction. And I believe that there's a trailer on their site right now.
So now that we have a full-time person on economic development, that's what you, you told us?
We have two.
Two, now we have two full-time people. Would it be possible, as opposed to waiting until the development agreement is almost up, to reach out on a, on a, on a more regular basis to see if there's something that we as the city can do to assist them in whatever, what portion of their project they're in?
Definitely.
I mean, I think that would behoove us to, to work with, with these developers. My next question has to do with CLURA and KIRA, and we've had this discussion. We actually had a meeting with the developers, because I have such an issue with the three years at 100% tax abatements. And I had proposed at that time a six years at 50%. Can you explain what, what financially would be different for us if we went to something at six years as opposed to three years? I know the, I know the bankers and the contractors weren't in favor, but...
Yeah, yeah, he, for the rest of the council, Councilman Bozen met with the Grow Committee, which is grow residential opportunities in Waterloo, which is comprised of some bankers, some land developers, some housing builders, and they recommended to keep it as it is. I don't know if Michelle wants to comment on the, on the overall economic impact of, of how it happens. Of course, always, the taxes are always behind, so a new house built yesterday, we're not actually gonna see the taxes on that for quite some time, because they're gonna get the three years at 100%. We'll still get the land value, but otherwise, the rest, we'll wait. And of course, with taxes being behind, it's probably more like four and a half years. Then I guess the nice thing about the CLURA is we've had it in place for quite some time, so that for next year, we're getting taxes that were probably built four years ago coming on to the tax rolls, which were some of our better years on the, on the charts for housing numbers. But as Councilman Bozen noted, he asked for them to look at it six years at 50%, so we'd see a little bit more of an immediate impact. And obviously, this will be coming up, I believe, in December of 2022 is when the CLURA ends, so we'll have to either extend it or change it, or whatever we want to do at that time, so there'll be more discussion coming on that. And we can definitely look at the numbers and what it's done. I don't have those numbers right in front of me. I do know that the, since the adoption of the CLURA, our one and two family home numbers have gone up, and our overall housing numbers have also gone up by a greater amount, so, you know, with more housing activity here, I think construction brings construction.
And, and the reason I bring this up, and it because, you know, for the three years at 100%, and then the taxes are behind, it's not just City Waterloo not bringing in your revenue, and it's, it's the county and the school systems and everyone else. If we, and that's why I brought up the six years at 50%. And another reason I brought up the six years at 50% is because you wouldn't have that sticker shock on year four, where in some of these housing developments, your taxes go up $8,000 to $12,000 a year, which is a huge sticker shock as opposed to only going up 50%. When we relook at CLURA and KIRA, would, would it be possible to look at an either-or, to offer the developer or the homeowner the three years at 100% or six years at 50% so that they wouldn't have that sticker shock if this was gonna be their dream home and they were gonna stay there?
And, and we'll have to look at that. I, it's been a while since I had to, since we reviewed this. When we adopted the CLURA, I know we had to choose one of the two KIRA abatement schedules, so they matched. And so if we decide to change the CLURA, we may have to change the KIRA as well, so we'll look at that.
They have to go hand in hand. Okay. Now, on, on, the next question had to do with infill development, and, and you and I have had these discussions in the past also, because I originally thought that the infill development was to get 657A properties on the tax roll. And now we've expanded it to just about any lot in any neighborhood that meets that 20-year criteria. And we've got a lot of bigger projects coming up. They're gonna tax our, our $5,000 per unit. So when did we morph from the dealing with 657A properties and trying to get, to stop doing mowing and snow removal and get city lots on the tax rolls to anywhere in town?
And I apologize, I don't have that with me today, so I can get you the dates. You know, it originally started out, yes, our policy for selling 657A lots or other kinds of city land that we may have acquired through a transportation project, and it's a disposal parcel, but whatever we were selling, we had set it up, so our development agreements were set up so that they would buy them for $5,000 minimum. The reason we had the minimum acquisition on there was to make sure that people were serious. We didn't want to have a lot of development agreements out there with people that didn't really have the financing. So the $5,000 was a small gesture to show that they actually were putting some money into this in case they went default. They had to buy them for $5,000, and then when the house was built, they got the $5,000 back plus an additional $5,000 for the investment. We did morph that through an amendment to the policy. I'll have to look up the dates. I was thinking it was like 2015 or something, but I don't want to give you a wrong date either. So I'll get you those dates of the first one and then the change one. And we did change it because we did have a lot of vacant lots out there, honestly, in some older neighborhoods that weren't getting sold. We had developers contacting us, saying, I just can't make the numbers work for what the bank will give me to build a house on here for a spec house or something, and what I can sell it for based on this. And it was also based on discussions of when they developed Baltimore Field. You know, one of the, one of the things about Baltimore Field is everybody said, hey, that's a really nice area, you can just go plot some houses on there. What you don't realize is back when the land was originally developed, since it was owned by the schools, they didn't put in any water and sewer stubs in. And so they're, so they're going in there and having to cut into the road. And talking to some developers, they're like, yeah, that could cost us up to $5,000 per lot. So that was when we morphed it into saying, okay, for some of these empty lots, there may be a reason why they're empty. There's no sewer to it, it's extra cost to get to it, and this was a way to try and help push that to that next level. And you're right, I mean, we've seen great success with it. I know talking to Scogman Homes with the Lincolnshire one over there off of Ainsborough, the reason they were able to make the new construction of that road work was because of the infill policy giving them back, you know, substantial amounts of money for the large number of houses. At the same time, while there'd be larger projects like that, we need housing, obviously, because our census numbers are telling us we're going down. So it's, it's our efforts to try and boost it, but it's specifically into older neighborhoods. And again, they may be a larger lot like Baltimore Field, like the Lincolnshire property that's in an older neighborhood, but again, it's getting that filled in where we already have, for the most part, garbage trucks going by, you know, we have water and sewer in a lot of areas right nearby, so it's just their extensions off there. So it's, it's a little cost to the city over the long period, but bringing us in additional revenue through garbage, through sewer, through water, and property taxes.
And I don't think people realize that when we're trying to develop a school lot, that you just have one point of entry for water, sewer, electric, because that, that's the only thing on that lot that, that needed it. So then when we try to develop a, a school lot, there's quite a bit of infrastructure that, that's accompanying it, depending on where it's at, I'm, I'm down with that struggle. My next question had to do with workforce tax credits and that, because when a developer applies for workforce tax credits and, and other state grants, there has to be, at times, on some of those, a city financial component. But we as a council will approve the, the application for the workforce tax credits, but we don't really see what that component is. And I think it would behoove us as a council to know that information upfront, because it's gonna come back to us. And what I don't, what I, what I'd hate to see is an 11th hour, an agreement that we have to, all of a sudden, they've got their, they've got everything lined up, but now all of a sudden, we need to do this, 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 and this, and it has to pass in three readings because it's, yeah. And, and so if, if we could be brought into the loop sooner on, on what's gonna be required of these projects, I think we would better understand it when it came before council at that time. Now, let's, let's look at the, it got brought before the council on the, well, SixCom's a perfect example, because they, we had an agreement at 50% tax abatements because they applied for workforce tax credits. That state quit that program, and then we amended it to 75%. Now, we're back, and they've applied for the 50%. Or they have applied for 50%, they've applied for workforce tax credits. When would we be revisiting that development agreement? Because we would not want to continue at 75% if they're getting funding through workforce credits that, that, that we originally only approved at 50%.
Correct, yeah, we're waiting for the decision from the state to see if they get the workforce housing. Obviously, if they do, we recommend going back to the original tax rebate amount that was agreed upon when they were working to get it. And, and this kind of goes back, circling back to the question when you said, how often do you check back in with developers when they're, when they're past that time? So when we know, in this particular case, that they're working to get the workforce housing, we're not calling them yet, we're waiting for the workforce housing decision to see how they want to move ahead with the development agreement. If, if, obviously, they don't get it, we'd stay at the higher amount, and hopefully, they'd move ahead.
But SixCom would not qualify for infill development for, for those 70 units?
We, we did not have that in the development agreement because we had the higher percentage of rebates.
But even at the 50%, we didn't have it in the development agreement?
Correct.
Okay, and the reason I say that is because it, it's really not infill when we tore a building down to put a building up, correct? In my opinion, it's not.
I mean, with the, with some of the school sites, we've torn buildings down to put, to put buildings up. So I mean, we, we kind of look at each one. Generally, we don't, we're not doing the infill housing, I guess, in concert with the other larger development agreements, but we can definitely discuss that.
And then, Dave, let me just interject the question. On the workforce tax credit, if we've given them 75%, then they go after the workforce workforce tax credit, and they get it, what's their incentive to reduce 75% to 50?
Well, they're, they're past their timeline right now, so they need an amendment.
If they're past, okay, if they're past deadline, if they're not, do they have any incentive? I mean, they could say, hey, we're getting the tax credit and the 75%.
We're generally, I mean, we can definitely add some wording in here, saying if you get some other state incentives. We have some wording in the, in the development agreements that are eligible for state incentives that'll talk about that, so we're generally aware of what they're applying for. So in this case, we're, we're fully aware that they're applying for the workforce housing.
But we didn't have anything written into the agreement that would incentivize them to reduce it from 75 to 50?
Yeah, so we could definitely put something in there like that, saying if it was in the period of, hey, we thought they could apply, but they're saying they're not, we could have some wording in there, saying if you do apply and get this, it would be changed to this. And we've had some development agreements, I'd have to think of one over the years, where it's talked about if something happens, the percentage is at this, if something happens, the percentage goes lower.
But you could make that language broad enough that it could be for any grant that they get that would reduce their costs, something. I would suggest that.
That's a great idea, thank you. I, I've had a question about, because, because we approved applications for state funding for that number of 12 plexes at the southeast corner of Kimball and Ridgeway.
Yes.
Okay, so what, does, does that project require a, a financial incentive from the city if they get their grants?
They were able to receive the incentives before, because it did qualify as a grayfield site through the state of Iowa, which is kind of written into our policy, that if it qualifies for that, it qualifies for the infill. So we would be looking if they built, I think they can go one or two or three additional 12 plexes there with the land that they bought from, from Covenant Hospital, so they would qualify for the infill housing again if we did the same thing we did last time.
My question is, is it actually infill or repurposing when we're tearing out a parking lot to, to put these in? Because if you put it three 12 plexes in or four 12 plexes in at, at $5,000 a unit, we're looking at $220,000, $240,000 that we're gonna owe at $5,000 per unit, that we're gonna have to bond in capital improvements in, in order to, to just this one project. And we take the project like, like we have over there north of the YMCA. You know, you've got 11, is it 11 duplexes going in there? Or is it more than that?
Yes, I believe it's 11.
11 duplexes or 22 units, that's another $110,000 of, of $5,000 tax credits. So right, right, right there, we're at $350,000 if both of those go to fruition, and, and that we're gonna end up bonding to do this, to the infill development. So that, that concerns me. But I, yeah, that was the question, does it, does it qualify for, for that? Because I know we had to agree when they applied for these things for some city incentives. And I just have a couple more questions, and one has to do with what, what Councilman Morrissey was talking about. I was, I was concerned on the, on the Borwigg addition, the, the fact that, that have, have we actually, as of today, deeded that land to the Borwigs? Because on the, on the tax rolls, it's not been deeded yet.
No, we have not. They, I think we just finalized the plat.
Didn't we get the plat when Jamie sent that out to us?
That was the construction activities for the plat. I can't remember if the plat's gone all the way through the process.
Eric Schrader, city planner, the preliminary plat will be on the next council agenda. The final plat will be shortly thereafter. They're still finalizing the deed to dedication. Once the final plat is approved, then the abstracting work will be done so that the plat can be recorded. As soon as that plat is recorded, is the earliest we can then convey any of the lots within that.
So, so either one of you, what is the normal timeframe to, on a project like this to get, get this back? Because we approved this May 17th, and now we're pushing seven months, and it's, it's and it's, it's not been deeded to them yet. But what concerned me about that was the fact that they were in there taking trees out. They were in there taking trees out on land that we hadn't finalized the purchase of that additional land to the west of, of, on that Borwig addition. And that concerned me, having, having the, the developer in there taking those trees out, not owning the land, and we didn't own the land, to allow them an early access agreement. So I, I, I would hope in the future that we could, we could work some of these things out so that we, we wouldn't, because I think we, we, we had some liability then.
We, we, we had a right of entry with the, with, with him to do it on our land.
Wait, that came in after the fact, though.
I think he might have got a little overzealous in his, his timeframe and, and going to the west while we were still closing on that land. Um we did have all the documents signed, but it was not actually closed.
Right, because we didn't, we didn't have that land deeded to us for quite some time, because I know, I know we had, we were dealing with the two owners, one out of town, one, one closer by, and the.
Dave, if I could.
Please, go ahead.
Well, a, and Noel, when I looked at that, I see that there's six lots. So with what Mr. Boz, or Councilman Bozen was talking about with the five thousand dollar um allotment per um unit, that means there would be uh six units, or can they be duplexes to twelve, or is this just single-family, six single-family homes at five thousand each? Is that what that means?
The lot sizes will probably be six, single-family homes.
But there would be six?
Probably five, five homes and one garage.
That are part of the Borwig plan?
Borwig, I think, has five lots.
Yeah, and then Mr. Stevens has one of the six lots in his development agreement, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so that, that's the problem I got. If it's titled the Borwig addition, and it has a lot in there that's not his, something's screwy. It just is. You, you don't have a Bor, you don't name something and then have part of it that's not even part of this addition. There, that does.
To subdivide out the land for, for Mr. Stevens, we had to do it as part of the plating process, which was listed in his development agreement that we would doing, be doing that and plating it, then conveying it to him once that was completed. I mean, the name of the subdivision is just what we picked since we're partnering with Mr. Borwig for the majority of it. We, we could have called it the Noel subdivision, but then the planning commission would have voted against it. But um, you know, that's just a name that they chose since he's our partner. It, it's pretty common to plat, put a name on an addition and then plat lots out.
And I just have one last, last question, and it, it's totally different from, from the other ones. And I, and I want to thank you for having that, that uh uh development meeting that we had. And I, I would, I would, I would ask that we have them more often. Uh, uh, I, I like, I like being uh kept in the loop on, on a lot of these things, and that, so I've got some background before it comes to council. And I appreciate all the time you spent. Uh Mr. Greider was on the line with us too when we, when we met. Uh but I was, I was really surprised to find out that, that, that the Midport Development TIF has no sunset clause. And that, that, that surprises me to know, and that, that, that there, there's no expiration date on it whatsoever. But do we have any other TIFs out there that, that, that have the same no sunset clause? Because this is, this is, in that meeting we had, and, and I, I might have been remiss in that, that I did not know that Midport Development never expires.
The downtown area does not have a sunset. The Wrath area does not have a sunset. A portion of the northeast industrial park area was, was tiffed before the state put forth, so its grandfather den did not have a sunset. And, and then when you say Midport, including the former Logan Plaza, when it goes down sixty-three, also has no sunset. The, the East Unified does not have a sunset.
Because they merged.
Correct.
Okay, so we have four or five TIFs that, that will never contribute to the general fund outside of expiring debt levy?
Or, or, or us releasing it. So the northeast industrial park area, I believe we released all the TIF increment from that um a couple of years, and even though there's a portion that does not have a sunset. So we have the ability to still release funds if we don't have any infrastructure needs, immediate or projects and things like that.
You can, you can release that without a sunset clause. That's what I wanted to, to clarify. Okay, that's all I have, and I really appreciate your time, and I appreciate everything your staff does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Other questions? Noel, if you would make sure and get all this information to us, I know we'd really be appreciative, as well as the new council members. Um one other question I had is you and I and a, a developer and the mayor talked several years ago about maybe having, for small businesses, something similar to the CLURA. Have you been able to advance that at all?
Not citywide, we haven't yet, so that's something we'd want to look at um as, as we're working on.
I think that'd be a great policy that all of us would appreciate looking at, because we don't have the big development agreements for the small businesses, but they need some incentives as well. So if we could do something similar to what we're doing with housing, terrific.
Yep, definitely, definitely. We try to be mindful of small business sites and creating the smaller lots. A lot of our six fifty-seven As along two eighteen, really from, from about Ninth Street down to Eighteenth Street, we've created a lot of small business sites there, but we can always look for more.
Okay, and when does the, the whole process of the planning for crossroads, what, are you working on that now, or where's that stand?
I am, I am, especially with the activity happening at the theme park, you know, there is a lot of chatter about the crossroads area. Um you know, unfortunately, you know, I, I, if, if I talk to ten people, um six of them may be really working on it, but uh we're continuing to talk to developers about that area, continuing to talk to the owners about that area and trying to figure out something to happen.
But we don't have a, an organized approach to addressing some of the.
You know, as you talk to different developers and, and you see things happening, you know, just across the state of Iowa, but across the nation with malls, there's a lot of different opinions on what should happen out there, from sports-themed activities to mixed-use buildings with residential built into them, to um some people think you should just demo the whole thing and start over, build a road right through the middle. Um so there's, you know, it's really about a matter of, of looking at our options, looking at who's out there to partner with that can actually make some of these things happen with private investment and, and trying to move ahead.
And I know that there's some existing small businesses in the crossroads area looking at Ms. Wilder, um and, and others like her, that they've got boots on the ground. They know what's going on there and could give us some real insight and help. So whatever we can do there.
Definitely. Yeah, any input is good. You know, obviously, the businesses that are out there are gonna have some information for us as we move ahead towards redevelopment of it and just, like I said, figuring out what that means.
And my last question is, have you done any design overlay planning for around the, the new amusement park?
You've been talking, you've been talking to Dave, haven't you?
No, no.
Not, not yet. We've, we started discussing it. Obviously, we have the Highway two eighteen overlay district that goes along the highway. Um so we're looking at um either having different districts or expanding that one to include larger areas of, 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 of need, really.
I just think we've got some great land out there. Let's make sure and get prime developers to take advantage of it.
Definitely.
Yeah, if I could interject.
Yeah.
Uh, and the north side of Waterloo, um that's north of the river, um we need some development out there. Now, I know that um we got Logan Plaza take, I mean, starting to take care, but there's so much area out there that's undeveloped that needs to be developed. So rather than taking Ms. June's advice and just concentrating on South Waterloo, please go to North Waterloo and take care of North Waterloo as well, Noel, okay?
I think we've got some exciting things coming pretty quickly for North Crossing, so.
My suggestion on small business was for small business throughout the, the city, not just on the south side of town. So.
Okay.
So I'm looking at the whole city.
I missed that part, Sharon.
You did, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Greider.
And I know that you and I had discussed this earlier, Noel, but I am looking forward to our childcare incentive, because we know um this continues to be an ongoing issue uh with two point five million predominantly women out of the workforce because of childcare issues. That number's only expected to get worse. Uh I am looking forward to what you and your office have been working so diligently on, uh so that we can roll that out hopefully within the new year.
Well, and let me piggyback on that, because that idea, does that tie in at all into the new childcare center that's gonna be out in um Logan Plaza?
In North Crossing, I mean, definitely, you know, we'll be seeing what we can do there.
Any incentives we do with this would be applicable to that?
Yes.
And do they think they're getting any incentives right now?
We're working on a development agreement for that master planning of, of, of things, activities that happen out there. Um you'll see on the next planning commission some plating of land um along that east side of East Fourth Street, and then some proposed um lot, or street extensions and lots along Highway sixty-three itself. So there's a lot of things happening.
In that daycare center, but we haven't got the agreement that Mr. Greiner is talking about, which should be the same, shouldn't it?
Again, that one, that one may, may use, utilize that program. It may be separate because it's in a specific larger development project area. We'll have to look at the details when we get to that.
Okay, okay. And let me just add to what Mr. Marcy said. You've got a lot of development going out in that north side of town. Mr. Stroh is doing a lot. Are there additional projects that maybe we as a council aren't aware of? Why are you looking at me with that puzzled look?
I'm in disbelief, Ms. June.
What?
Just.
Did I say something wrong?
A lot of development going on.
Well, everything's relative.
Show me it, would you, Ms. June?
Everything's relative. In talking to.
You know, I, I will tell you this, we, we can have a large project out there like CPM that's, that's a hundred and seventy thousand square foot, that's, that's increasing employment and all that. But I can tell you to the general public, a new restaurant will be a lot more exciting. So sometimes there's a lot of activity happening in areas, but it's not necessarily something you'd notice, or, or if it's in our industrial parks, you may not drive by there to see it. Um so we're definitely working to, to bring all different types of development.
Senior Center and the daycare and other things going there.
And more residential development, please.
Yes, yeah, and a restaurant. What else would you like, Mr. Marcy? Department store?
I have, I have his wishlist anyway.
I, I think it's.
Top shop, yeah.
Why don't we continue this in another week? I mean, I got a laundry list of stuff. Do you want me to do through, go through that?
We have not got the time, Mr. Marcy.
Jerome is telling me to keep quiet.
Oh, is he? He's always such a smart man. Anything else you'd like to share with us or any other questions we have? A lot of good information.
Thank you all for your support. You know, it's, it's your programs, your policies that make it our jobs work, so.
Well, share all that information with us and we're there for you.
Wish them to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.